Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the Wednesday, February 5th, 2014, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Krakowski has our dog today.
I have a very special treat today. We have a little girl, she's about one or two years old, beagle mix, maybe a full beagle, I'm not sure, she looks kind of small for a full-blooded beagle, but very cute, great personality, very sweet, would love to go home with somebody. She'll be available on Saturday, so if you're interested, come down to the dog kennel and pick her up. If not, we have 21 other dogs and most of those dogs are big. She's got a scent going on. What do you smell? What do you smell? Go get it. Look at her. Aw, that's a beagle for you, right? How cute is she? Okay, so come on down to the dog kennel, check us out on the website, we have a lot of dogs on the website that you could take a look at, too. Thank you.
Are you sure that's a beagle? Because every beagle I know barks.
That one was, before you got here, it was yelping.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No travel, bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kahlo. I do have a couple of personnel actions that I'd like to talk with the Board about, specifically possible hires at Golden Acres, and Maintenance Department, telecommunications. Also want to discuss ongoing labor negotiations, more specifically at the Sheriff's Department, also the potential sale and purchase of real estate. All of those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session, we talk about those items that I've specified. Thank you.
Thank you. Approved the reading in the minutes of January 22nd and 29th?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized salary increase of Illyria community judges, which reflects the county's two-fifth share. Judge Gary Bennett, presiding judge at a bi-weekly rate of $950, and Judge Lisa Lockgraves, administrative judge at a bi-weekly rate of $973.08.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Support the vibrant Neo-2040 Vision Framework in action products to promote community stability, economic prosperity, and high quality of life for residents in northeast Ohio by inspiring and informing local decision-making.
Mr. Challander, any comments at all on this? I know you were pretty active in the Neo-SOC.
Well, this is...
You've got to come up here. Got to retrain them.
Good morning. As you're aware, Neo-SOC was created three years ago. The final report is just being released, and the 12 counties that are participating in the Neo-SOC initiative are passing letters of resolution based on the findings that the report has provided, and those are listed in the resolution here.
That it? Thanks, nice job for three years.
It is being extended. The report was supposed to be done, finished in 2013. With everything going on and the size of the project, we've asked for requests to continue the work. We still have funding in the budget, and that will last until June of this year.
There's no funds coming out of the general fund on this?
No, no, this is all a grant through HUD, the Department of Energy.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, you're welcome.
I'll move.
Second? Anything further? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, amend NSP agreement with City of Lorraine for purpose of adjusting budgets and numeric goals for a total not to exceed $381,458.29. To include the decrease acquisition rehab, 25% set aside from $265,781.71 to zero, and decreasing the units to zero. Decrease the demolition from $336,000 to $335,000, and decrease the administration from $53,730 to $30,000.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Award CT consultants mentor contract to provide professional services for pre-application work in preparation of FY14. CHIP grant application amount not to exceed $5,500 to be paid from the planning account.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the engineer, advertise for bids for North Ridge Road, roadway reallocation project, Brownhound Township. Notice being entered on February 14th and 21st, and open at 2:00 PM on February 27th. This project consists of relocation of 1,200 feet of North Ridge Road, 300 feet of drilled shaft retaining wall, 1,700 feet storm sewer installation, guardrail, and pavement markings. Estimated cost of $775,000 will be provided by OPWC grant in the amount of $543,634, and the loan in the amount of $178,000 paid from MVGT Engineering Projects.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Certified the annual county highway mileage in accordance with the Ohio Realized Code for 501.04 for 2013. Mileage for 12 was $269.698 miles.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advertise for bids for Foster Road Bridge 0144 replacement, Penfield Township, which is a quarter mile north of Jones Road. Notice being entered on February 14th and 21st, and open at 2:30 PM on February 27th.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved enter in LPA agreement with ODOT to resurface Baumhart Road from Rusher Road to Garfield Road West. Authorized engineer to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form, and this project is being paid for federally funding assistance from NWA.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved enter in LPA agreement with ODOT to resurface Oberlin Road from Rusher Road to City of Oberlin Corporation Line. Authorized engineer to execute in behalf of the Board of Prosecutors' approval as to form. Project is being paid by federal funding assistance from NWA.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approved enter lease purchase agreement with Akron Tractor and Equipment and Kansas State Bank for lease purchase of two New Holland T475 tractors with Alamo mowers for the county garage in the amount of $126,619 to be paid from the MVGT account.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo? Mr. Kahlo?
What? Mr. Cordez?
Mr. Cordez had some?
No, you were... Yes, I, I...
No, I'm sorry, I was looking down forward on it. Sorry.
Am I missing something?
I was thinking on some, I thought we were past it.
See, the stones get to you, isn't it?
No, not at all, I was just looking forward to some other stuff on here, that's all.
Is it yay?
Just calling for the motion.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Cordez.
There you go. Thank you. I was just moving a bit faster than the rest of us.
I have a couple of quick issues this morning. One trail is into number 14 with NSP. We've reallocated the funds from Lorraine. We have worked with the City of Illyria, they are in the middle of a rehab project down on Middle Avenue, down by the little path where the school is. As you know, they've designated this corridor for redevelopment, going down to around Ninth Street. One of the houses, they could put more rehab money into and take some of their NSP-1 money that they're using for the rehab, and then use that towards demolition. So I'm going to pass this down to you. I would request that you look at this resolution and we increased their allocation by $49,825 to help them with their rehab project. They'll take that amount of funds, that's an NSP-3 right now, put it, excuse me, that amount of funds that's NSP-1 money in the project and move that to demolitions. I think they can probably get two or three more demos in the City of Illyria by doing that, and we need to get these NSP-3 funds.
For how much money are you talking?
It's about $49,000, some change, $50,000. And again, we got money back unexpectedly from Lorraine because they made a decision not to do redevelopment on those properties up there. So this is good for us, it's good for the City of Illyria. We just looped around on this, and I'd like to get a resolution so that we can get moving. Some of these funds have to be exhausted at the beginning of March, so this fits very nicely into our timeframes.
Do you need an informant of a motion?
He's got the paperwork for her to read though. Just one?
I think so.
Can I make a question?
She's got to read it.
Amend the NSP-3 agreement between Lorraine County and City of Illyria for the purpose of adjusting budgets, which amendment will increase City of Illyria not to exceed budget $644,135, which increases the acquisition rehab activity from $242,135 to $291,960.75.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
And the last one has to do with hiring a firm to work with our Fair Housing Board. It's pretty standard every year. I just didn't get this one on the agenda quick enough this week.
Is that CT once again? Is that CT, or who's the firm?
No, it's another firm. It's in the captioning there.
Yeah, Donald Eager and Associates.
Did this go out for bid? Is that, they came in lower than CT?
Excuse me?
This went out for bid?
I believe so, Don's here.
Oh, they have? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. We actually advertised and sent out invitations to bid. Donald Eager and Associates has been providing the Fair Housing Services for several years now, and has always performed very well.
What are the services, Don?
What they provide is a hotline number, so if people are, throughout the county, are concerned about housing choices, or if they're not being treated fairly, they will actually provide the investigation, rather than having our staff. Then they'll work with us and the state of Ohio to see if there is actually a foundation for any actions. They also provide materials. Also, they give us, we've upgraded the contractor, some of the services without any additional costs, to be able to have some of the brochures now in Spanish, so that we're better able to serve our entire population.
Okay, thank you.
That concludes anything I have this morning, thank you.
It's not to exceed 10,000, but if they actually have to do certain things for us, like investigate something, do they charge on top of that for their services, or is it not to exceed 10,000?
It's not to exceed 10,000, it would be an extraordinary case, and typically that's when the state would come in, because we've now referred, we refer it to the state of Ohio, if it gets that complicated.
All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Approved enter into an agreement with Donald B. Eager and Associates LLC, Lancaster, Ohio, as provider for fair housing services in compliance with CHIP, block grant FY13, and the amount not to exceed 10,000.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I have one matter of pending court action, and another matter of imminent court action that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session. Also, I have a matter which involves an issue with former Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy. I don't know if you want to discuss that now, or wait until public comment and take that up at that point.
You can do it now, Jerry, it's your report, go ahead.
Okay. I think you've, there's been some correspondence directed to the Commissioners...
Correct.
...about a paper street that is adjacent to property that is owned by Mrs. Vacy. And what happened is, when the subdivision was built, the developer never put in this road. There are plotted lots along the road, but it was not completed by the developer, so obviously, there never came a point where the engineers go out, look at it, and subsequently accepted the roads for dedication. And I'm going to let Chris Pyonoski fill you in on more of the details. One, obviously, I acted as Mary Jo's attorney for many years, so I thought it, and Dennis and I both thought it appropriate to have staff in our office, not directly associated with Mary Jo, to review it, but it was not formally accepted by the engineer, but over many, many... And how long ago did this happen, Chris?
Chris, you've got to come up to the microphone, we can't talk from the floor.
That was going to be my first question, how old of a development are we talking about?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? Really?
Development was put in in the 1920s, I think 1927 exactly. That's when the original plat was drawn.
It's just been sitting there all this time, and I'll ask Mrs. Vacy to come up here in a minute, but my understanding is that she purchased the property, and there apparently was a sewer installed, and there actually have been sewer assessments, so the whole issue came up as to whether or not this is dedicated, and whether there's a responsibility on the part of the county with respect to this road. So I guess, Mary Jo, I'll ask you to come up and explain your position, so that I'm not misstating it, and then I'll let Chris give his report.
Yeah, it was dedicated in 1920...
Introduce yourself, Mary Jo. Introduce yourself, people don't remember you.
Mary Jo Vacy. Anyway, I guess it was dedicated in 1927, but you've been collecting mileage on that, and it is on the map, and we are paying sewer assessment, and I've been paying this, and so have the people along the roadway. And we just kind of feel that the county has responsibility. The road is placed, I mean, it's partially put in, it's up to sublot 52-007, but the rest of it has not been maintained. I kind of feel like at one time, it may have been a dirt road or gravel road, and just nothing has ever been done with it. But being that there is a partial street in there, being that the county has it on the map, and they are collecting funds for it, and we are paying for a sewer, and not only that, but I'm afraid that the county may have some liability also, because the abutting property owners may have children, or maybe somebody that owns land along there would like to go see where their land is, and if they go on the county property and it's not maintained, I think the county has liability. I don't know, do you have any questions?
No, we'll let Chris go next, Mary Jo.
Okay, if you have any questions, I mean, we can't even get to the property.
Jerry, this sounds familiar to the one issue that we had with Mr. Donovan, where the road wasn't dedicated.
No, it's a different, this is a different scenario, Tom, but let Chris jump in. You have something else, Mary Jo?
Well, I was going to say, it hasn't been ever put on non-maintained status.
It's never been what?
Put on, the county has never put it on non-maintained status, so I think they have a responsibility to maintain it. They own it. And by putting it on the map, they agreed to own it. So therefore, there was a question at one time about dedication, and whether or not it was actually certified as dedicated, but I think by claiming it, they own it.
Chris?
Chris, yeah. Let's hear the legalese part now.
Well, I think the question is not whether it's been dedicated, I think that's pretty clear, when you look at the plat from 1927 and subsequent actions, the question is, has the county ever accepted it? The, I don't have an explanation how the builder put in all the rest of the subdivision streets and not this one, why this one was excluded, but it appears as though every other street was put in, this one never was. So to Ms. Vacy's point about maintaining it, I don't know how you maintain a street that was never put in, I think the question is, who has the responsibility of installing this street after all this time? The plat was originally filed in 1927, there appears to be a clear dedication, the question is whether it was ever accepted. Sewers were put in in the entire subdivision, so to exclude this one proposed paper street, and because that street's not there, I think that's an issue of fact, you know, and there's a number of things that we'd have to consider if we were to look at this issue, and that's one of them. Does that constitute acceptance by the county, and is that enough? The collecting of the mileage, that's another issue of fact, is that enough to constitute acceptance? But I think that's the real issue, has the county accepted this street, which never was installed? And so I think that's the conversation that has to be had, and I don't know if that's something we want to talk about now, or, you know, how fully we want to go into that.
Well, you know, when we get in to start telling the Commissioners about the pros and cons of this, my original thought was, that would be something that we would discuss in executive session under imminent litigation. I don't know, yeah, I guess that old Mary Jo knows whether this is something you might pursue to litigation or not. I understand you had some objection to us proceeding in that manner.
I did, Jerry.
You have to, you have to come up to the microphone, sorry.
We'll just do a little...
Do a dance, Chris.
Well, I am concerned, there's never been any, anybody talking about any legal issues or bringing this to court, that's why I was concerned about going into executive session. I've never heard anything that anyone, or even myself, was ever going to bring it to court. I would hope that this issue could be settled right here. And, and I think, Chris, you can explain what dedication means. It means that it's a public roadway, a dedicated public roadway.
Right.
So if it was a dirt road at one time, and the county never maintained it, whose problem is that?
But I think it's more than one step, and I don't want to, I would prefer not to go back and forth.
Okay, well, anyway, part of that street is put in, and why it was never completed, or why the county or whoever never maintained it from the time that it was dedicated, or roadway, or whatever, if it was gravel or dirt, why it was never maintained is not my problem, I don't know.
Mary Jo, how long have you had the property?
I don't know, actually, my husband purchased it.
Jo did, okay.
Years ago.
Okay.
And of course, I inherited it.
Sure.
The other roadways that were put in, was it, were they put in by a developer in the 20s? I mean, wouldn't it have been up to the developer to finish the roadways and maybe, you know, add additional housing?
But that's what I'm saying, maybe it was put in by a developer as a gravel or dirt road at one time, and never maintained. Like I said, we can go out there and check what...
But are there houses on all the other portions of the development? Maybe the developer just quit, you know, ran out of money, or couldn't find buyer, whatever, but I would think it'd be up to a developer to put the roads in if they wanted to develop the property. Normally, when a city or whatever puts in a roadway, then the people get assessed for the road, and sewers, and things of that nature.
I don't know what happened, if someone here knows what happened way back then, I'd appreciate their answer.
Mr. Cordez, if you were around. I'm joking.
Well, I wasn't around, but the, there are about nine platted lots back there, and interesting, the home on where would be the end of the paper road is actually spread out and taken over onto the, where the paper road would be, where it is. So they've kind of homesteaded it out into the, to the right-of-way. The one north of that, where there's a partial dirt road, goes one lot back behind the home on an adjacent road, it appears, I don't know who put that in, but it appears to be a self-maintained drive, but there is a home, one of the, one of the lots, as Mary Jo has indicated, is, is built out, and it looks like it was built out a very, very long time ago. So whether the developer actually put a partial road into that, to that lot, I have no idea, but it's been there for a long time. But she was right, there's nothing else going back to those other properties between the southern and northern transit roads.
And why do we have to pay sewers if we can't use street? If we can't use our property, if, we can't even get to the property? What's the point of paying, paying the sewers? What's the point of the county putting it on the map and claiming this street and collecting mileage on it? If you're saying there's no street there...
Well, I don't know that we're collecting mileage on the property for shoots.
Yeah, you are, because I have proof of it. I don't have it with me today, but I do have proof, they are.
As Mr. Ennis indicated, I don't know that the county's collecting any mileage, Mary Jo. The, with regard to the sewer, normally when they build a subdivision like that, and they put in, they begin with a package plant, it would have been a package plant up there, they assess all the lots that they're selling in the community to pay for the package plant, and then there's usually a guarantee by the people that buy the lots with the developer. We have the same thing going on down in Pheasant Run right now. We have the same thing going on down in Pheasant Run right now.
Run, I was just thinking that, exactly.
Right? There's X amount of lots that still want to be built out, but they don't have sewage capacity in the package plant. There's a lot of litigation. That litigation's ongoing between the homeowners association and the people that purchased the lots. Here, we don't have an HOA set up, uh, so that litigation would have been between the developer who sold the lots and made a representation because initially the sewers were not put in by the county, they would have been put in by the developer.
The developer, right.
I know we're not collecting any funds from the sewers out there.
Well, the engineers, 'cause that's who I'm paying it to, sanitary engineer.
Let me, and again, because even though there still seems to be some potential for some litigation arising out of this. So we're not going to make a detailed legal item by legal item discussion out here. Um, yeah. If I say that what we have found out is that, uh, it was not constructed by the developer, um, it was not accepted by any resolution or so forth of the county. Uh, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you, Mary Jo. The county auditor showing it, or the tax map showing it on their records does not constitute acceptance. They're just showing it for the benefit of anybody that wants to know that that road is there.
But is, I have another question, Jerry. The acceptance was in what, 1950-something? It was made a law that the county has to accept it?
That's, you, you do two, there's two steps. You can approve a plat, which is what the county does routinely. It will approve the plat so that the, everything can go forward. It does not accept, the, the person that files the plat puts in their paragraph saying, "I am dedicating this to the county." Unless the county accepts the dedication on the plat, which we do not do, then it waits until the road is completed, the engineers go out and check it and say it's been done according to our specifications or whatever requirements, and then the commissioners can accept it. That's one way of doing it, and that has never happened. Another way of that acceptance being accomplished is through some overt act. We don't have any evidence that there was any dirt road or anything there, Mary Jo. I mean, that, I mean, you said, "I feel like there might have been," that, we don't have any facts to support that. So the, like Chris said, there's two issues, one, the mileage, and one, the sewers, which, and as you and I talked, when I initially heard that thing about the sewers, I thought that might legally be something that constituted acceptance. Chris did research on it, and quite frankly, I was wrong on that. The case law indicates that the installation of sewers does not. Now, it could under certain circumstances, but, um, that, that doesn't acquire it, so we're, you know.
But then why would we pay sewers if we can't even use them?
Well, you still might use them in the future.
Why is the county collecting this money?
You still might use them in the future. And as Chris may, can complete his explanation, there is a process in which the landowners can petition for this road to be built and installed. And then, 'cause see, when a, where the road is built, that cost is normally funneled into your cost of purchasing the property from the developer. Okay? So the landowners purchasing property would indirectly be assessed when they purchase the property. That didn't happen here, so the law provides for another methodology. If you want this road built, you can petition the court.
I think at one time I did, Jerry.
Petition the commissioners to do that.
I think I did.
And have it built and be assessed. That, that can certainly be done if that's, that's what you want to do.
Or we can wait until somebody tries to get to their property and falls and gets hurt and sues the county. So you may have a, a legal right to executive session.
I understand that.
There might be a possible lawsuit there.
And did you want to finish your explanation, Chris?
Well, I, I think it's just the, the second step of the process, whether the county's ever accepted. And there's a couple of different ways it can happen. Based on the information that I have and the research that we've done and discussions we've had, I don't think that we're there. I don't think that the county has. And so, um, you know, we can talk about that further, um, and that's, that's where we stand. As far as the sewers, uh, to put in an entire subdivision and leave out this one platted, dedicated, yet not accepted or installed road, to me, I don't know that that gets anywhere. And why the property owner, you're still the property owner to the abutting land, wouldn't pay their share of that, that assessment. I, I don't know that that gets, um, is, is a huge issue either. It, it still has to be paid for. The alternative being, what, wait till the road is installed and then you pay your share of the sewers? I, I don't know that that makes any sense either. So I don't, I don't know that that gets anywhere either. But, um, it's something we could discuss further, um, maybe in executive session.
I have one more thing here. You know, I researched back in 1927 about all the commissioners' resolutions and all this, and it seemed to me their main concern was ditches back there. Did they ever accept these dedications? Or was it just a thing that the road was dedicated for public use? And maybe at that time in 1927, they didn't even consider it? 'Cause if you look at their resolutions, it's ditches, ditches, ditches. So I don't know. There's a lot of issues here, and I just feel that the county does have some responsibility here. But it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo.
Jerry, did you look at what the protocol was back then, or, I mean, just the different changes that have occurred?
Regarding the law?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's pretty much been the way the law works forever.
Okay.
Sounds to me like the sub, the developer just didn't finish that part of the road. That's what it sounds like.
Something, something happens.
But the sewers were going in anyway, and they were going by assessments to every property owners to help pay for the services that were gonna be in there, whether they built or didn't build.
How many vacant lots on that plot are there?
There's quite a few. Um, it's a nice area. The, the, the road could be put in. It's, it's, the paper road's there, or it could be vacated. Um, the, if it's vacated, those back lots really have no value, and those are the lots we're talking about. But a project could be done. The only, the only problem I would see with the project is, and it looks, appears fairly new to me, somebody built up on the southern road down in that southern quadrant there. You can't see it in the small, uh, drawing you have, map you have, but they're well into the right of way. The road actually comes within a few feet of their home.
Ooh.
Um, yeah, if you look, you'll see it down there.
Really?
Yes. But they've, they've explored all of that, um, uh, supposed road there. They've spread out, put a lawn back in there and some buffer shrubs and are just enjoying, uh, a larger parcel than they have.
Somebody else's property.
For fairly, yes, pretty much. Uh, they're the only homeowner that I see on the, on the maps that have actually done that. And their home faces south. They're not turned towards where the road would be. So that, if they decide to do a ro, road project, I don't think there's a big issue because they're not supposed to be there. But that, that would be the only thing, 'cause the road would come, uh, between two east-west roads and then run, uh, north and south. But it could be done. There's enough lots there to, uh, put an assessment against each lot that could still make it very practical for people that wanted to build out their lots back there.
That house you're talking about, is, isn't there minimum setbacks on property lines and things that they, they were able to build so close to?
Don't know, we don't have a building department.
We didn't done when that house was built, we did.
I don't know. I have, I have no idea. You know, you see some strange stuff, uh, out that way. There's a, there's enough for a road to go in, but it would, it would definitely diminish the, the overall value and aesthetics of that, that road, of that property on the southern end. But there's enough, there's enough lots there. And I'm just wondering, I don't even know if the sewer's in the ground. Mary Jo, do you know if the sewer's even in the ground out there?
I couldn't tell you, 'cause I've never been on the property. I can't get to it.
Yeah, it's pretty wooded. Uh, the, now, you know, again, if there's no, I don't even know if there's a sewer.
Don't you have a snowmobile she could borrow?
No.
No.
But I don't, I don't know if the sewer actually even goes down in that area in front of the lot. So it may not just be putting in a street. The sewer line may have to be extended, uh, down to those lots. In the case in, in Pheasant Run, they are required to provide access to the plant for sewers, but they're not required to put the sewers in. That would be part of anybody that developed later on in those, on all those, uh, out there platted lots. I have no idea to know what the agreement was or wasn't at the time this was all done. But if there's no sewer down there, that could raise the, the price of putting the road in and the sewer and then assessing it to those lots. It could get a little bit costly, but I don't think it's too huge. There's enough lots there to absorb it. But of course, the value of those lots would go up substantially.
Right. And so would the revenue for the county.
Oh, I'm agreeing with you.
Property tax.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you.
And another thing too, Jim, I just heard you mention that somebody is already claiming some of that land, they're playing on it or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, now that opens up a liability for the county.
Again, I don't know about the liabilities, as I was just explaining what I saw in the research, um, with regard to the road. The people that are facing west on the road that exists have not encroached in my, looking at the, uh, maps, have not encroached back. So there's a, the clear understanding where the property lines are. There's just this one on the southern end that's encroached.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo. Anything else, Jerry?
No.
Ms. Grozinski?
Mm-hmm. I reported last week, I believe, about the NREC, which is the National Resource Assistance Council. They did have a press release. They have $735,000 more dollars to give out. I just want to read the, the first paragraph. District Nine Natural Resource Assistance Council of Huron, Lorraine and Medina Counties announces the opening of round eight B applications for the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Fund Program. The NREC is responsible for the local review of applications and preliminary approval for distribution of funds allocated to District Nine by the State of Ohio to this program. The remaining allocation for, for District Nine is $735,395. So if you're interested in applying, you would go to pwcstateofohio.us/cleanohio HTM. And I'll have, give that to Hal, and he could put it up on the screen for those of you who are watching, um, by TV, in case I said that too fast or you don't have a pen handy. So, um, I talked to Craig Snoggrass yesterday about the dog licenses. Um, we know that January 31st was the deadline, but, uh, some of our vendors still have a couple of weeks left to get that money in. Mr. Snoggrass did say that he thinks that our revenue has gone up, uh, but we won't know like tag for tag until like a week or two. So hopefully, next week or the week after, I can report on that. Um, other than that, that's the end of my report.
Wonderful. Uh, busy week.
Thank you for those who made it today.
Yes.
Good to be open. Uh, yeah, it was a busy week, actually. Uh, last Thursday was the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, and I'm on their board there. Uh, Tony Gallow, the new president of the Chamber of Commerce, did a great job presenting what went on in 2013 and how he plans on moving forward. Also on Friday, Tom and I attended the Team Lorraine County Groundhog Day. And then after that, the board had a retreat, and we met till about 2:30 in the afternoon on how we want, we're hoping to have Team Lorraine County moving forward. Executive Committee met yesterday talking about a search for a new director. Uh, it's been ongoing for seven or eight months. So, busy week. But I also had a discussion last night with Grace Calucci from, uh, Noacka. Last Thursday, in a conflict with the chamber meeting, uh, was a meeting held amongst the five or six counties, abutting, Noacka also, our five county region, in discussion, uh, the federal government has, between 20 and 50 million dollars to come back for transportation projects, additional revenues they had, plus the state of Iowa had released somebody they were gonna work on, do a project with that they're not going to do now. Uh, and all the Board of Ohio had contacted Grace and Commissioner Blair's, past commissioners. Commissioner Blair had contacted me about being, I couldn't make the meeting, but I know Mayor Brenda was there, and I spoke to her on Friday about that meeting. But in discussions, they are looking at, uh, putting together a package, asking to do a commuter rail project from Toledo all the way through Lake County and possibly out to Youngstown. So we'll be exploring, I met with the county administrator this morning on it. Uh, hope to have a meeting with Mayor Brenda and talk about everything moving forward, which would be tie right into what we're doing with our train station.
You may want to give a break out of those, that financing. You have that letter with you, or?
No, I left the letter on my desk. I grabbed this package here.
Well, what we've been able to cobble together for.
The train station.
The train station, um, the Transportation Community Center with, uh, working with Amtrak. Amtrak would bring about $900,000 to the table that they, they received as funds to upgrade their old station, which they really didn't want to do down there, and since has burned down, so they, they have a trailer down there now, and they're, they're trying to wait on, on this project. They would bring those funds to the table. We have asked to reallocate 2,000, uh, 10 and 11 funds that remain unspent. Now, you remember, we lost almost $3 million for lack of match money, excuse me, 1.8 million for lack of match money. So rather than lose money again, we've, we've requested the FTA and they've been considerate enough to, uh, make that money available for capital, um, improvements. So that money is almost 3 million, can come to this project. We also have about a million dollars left in, uh, grant money that we had initially for the community center that we remained unspent, that was gonna be put towards the platforms and the elevators for the, uh, Amtrak, uh, partnership. Along, along those lines, we didn't have match money, though. We were, we were exhausting our match money and the money that was put into the transportation center over the years as our match. A couple of months ago, I started working on toll credits with the state of Ohio, which is something that came out at the meeting, and I think we surprised you by already having a request.
We'd already done it, right.
We'd already done it. Uh, I've asked the state to allocate about 1.8, 1.9 million dollars in toll credits from the turnpike to Lorraine County for this project, which can be used as a match against all the FTA dollars, thereby having local participation at almost zero, uh, to get this project moving. So where we're at in that project is we've done all the engineering RFPs, they're here, we've been reviewing them, we've also sent them out to Amtrak, Norfolk Southern, and the FTA as our partners, uh, going forward to take a look at. I will tell you, you know, we still have a lot of hurdles to overcome with, with Norfolk Southern, and the reason this project is so costly, they're requiring two platforms, one on each rail, uh, rail line. Amtrak's grandfather in their old location, they only have to have one, one platform. But because going forward, the new Norfolk Southern's applying these new standards, it's making it very, very expensive to put these, um, these platforms in, even if they're at ground level, not to mention that we're way up in the air.
Right.
So they're requiring it everywhere, so they don't have to move Amtrak onto a specific rail and they can continue their freight, uh, unimpeded if Amtrak's parked loading or, uh, or unloading passengers. We have some design ideas, and that'll be coming later in the year. But if Ohio, which I believe they will, gives us the, uh, the turnpike credits, we have a real project, and we have all the money we need. I have been in communication with Elyria, and the mayor has indicated a willingness to try to bring some dollars from the city of Elyria if, if we need them. Uh, I'm grateful for that, that was nice. But I, I don't think that we're going to need any, any additional local dollars.
Well, as the toll credits come over, we'll be all right.
As long as the toll credits come out. And of course, any money we receive from the state through DOT can be used as a match against the federal dollars.
Right.
Now, I'm not gonna go into the long triad that I usually go into about how the state treats public transportation. We all know that it's massively underfunded. But this would, this would, uh, help us so we don't have to rely upon the, the significantly reduced local dollars that we have right now. I'll let you know when I hear from the state. Um, and we'll also talk with, with the mayor and Ms. Calucci, but this is what they really were gonna bring to the table, was these, these toll credits.
Uh, also, Attorney DeWine awarded Lamb Bank the reutilization corporation's additional money in phase two. Uh, Lorraine County received $104,000 in change yesterday. So we'll take every little bit we can get towards demolition. Uh, also, I'd like to thank Ron Nabokowski, our Court of Courts. He said he'd give us $300,000 last year coming forward. He's moved up to $500,000, so we've shortened our gap by a couple hundred grand. Thank you, Mr. Nabokowski. End of my report, I guess.
Yeah. Um, Team Lorraine County did a fantastic job. It was a, liked the, the format with the board on there. Would like to have seen a couple, uh, maybe private sector individuals on there to talk about the economy and the future, but, uh, great format and great job. Chris Kish does an outstanding job for Team Lorraine County. I want to just, uh, thank her for everything she does for us. I actually spoke with, um, Mike DeWine's, uh, office regarding BCI. You know, when he took office, they told me they had over 120-day backlog. They're up to 23 days, and they're still working to, uh, improve the efficiency on that. And I was wondering if we could actually work out some type of agreement in the future where we might be able to use the current bond money in order to improve the efficiency of the department. They're gonna have somebody from BCI contact me later.
Excuse me, what current bond money? Get me lost?
Well, our, our, not bond money, our, um, our levy money, the 158,000.
Oh, the levy from the drug, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. Taking that, taking that money along with the equipment, putting it over with BCI in order to improve the efficiency or give us like some type of priority. Um, don't know if, if it's gonna work, but, um, they thought it was an interesting discussion item, and I'm supposed to get a call later today about it. I'll give you a report next week on that.
That'll work. That may be our plan B in 30 days.
Right. Well, it's just, you know, I want to take a look at it. It's something that's definitely needed in the county. Um, and they told me that if there was a case where they needed it to be expedited, it's something that they could currently handle today even. But, uh, current turnaround right now is 23 days, and with exceptions, it could expedite. So, uh, end of my report.
For respondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Cala.